This is called the San Diego City Council in the regular section on Tuesdays, September 2nd, 2025 at 7:21 PM. If you will, please rise for the indication to the place. Indication will be led by Councilman Dan, by the board of council members.
Please, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this time together. Thank you for this family learning and helping us as you got us, gave us your wisdom. And thank you for your grace. Please continue to help us and watch over those that need it the most. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
If you will, turn your face to the left.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its representative republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may you succeed.
The first item of our agenda is always our citizens' input time. We welcome anyone who'd like to speak. We'd like to get a citizen's input form from you if you will complete one of those. We'd like to get that. We don't preclude you coming forward to the State of the Union address for record or speaking and then filling out an oral form for the city secretary of residence. So I'm going to remind, well, let me remind those that would come forward to speak. Council cannot deliberate on any item that you bring up because it's not opposed to the agenda item, it's part of our limitations. But we can be all ears, staff will be all ears about any item we'd like to report. With that premise, is there anyone who'd like to speak during citizens' input time? Okay, so if no one approached the podium, we'll move on to item number three. We have kind of some special presentations under that tonight. We have United Way proclamation. Is anyone here representing the United Way tonight? Okay, I'll read the proclamation. Council can vote for a group proclamation. This is proclamation of the United Way of Indian County. Whereas the United Way of Indian County mobilizes communities like the city of San Diego for actions to often thrive and whereas united is the way we create a help to Indian County community with strength and resilience, wellness, and financial security where everyone, regardless of age, has the opportunity to flourish. Whereas by working together to co-create solutions to people's most pressing challenges, the United Way of Indian County positively impacts the lives of over 54,000 local residents annually. And whereas the United Way of Indian County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek out better solutions for larger community-wide issues. Now therefore, I am here, Mayor of San Diego, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby declare the month of September 2025 as United is the way month. And ask proudly to our United Way of Indian County in calling on all residents of San Diego to give to one, to impact many, as we take action to create a future where everyone has a chance to thrive. Council, that's the proclamation. Since we don't have to represent here, what's your pleasure on the proclamation? The motion to favor the population of the United Way of September 25th? Might as well. Usually we don't, but that's okay. We can do anything we want.
Like motion, highly, enthusiastically support this.
Got it, second. I'll say it. All right, I've got a motion for Councilman Chitt, seconded by Councilman Dan, approving and heartily endorsing the United Way proclamation seeking September 25th, 2025 as United is the way month. All in favor, take the raise of your hand. Pass it unanimously. Thank you. Council, that raises to our consent agenda. I believe that we will be fully out of eight for further discussion and clarity. You have other items there. Some final plans, final plan, a byboard for some well work, the minutes of August 18th, and some medic-type expenditures to replace some equipment on the net. Is there anything other that you'd like to pull other than item eight? So I'll entertain a motion that approves the consent agenda for all other items except item eight.
Mayor, my motion would be approved, the consent agenda except for item number eight. That's presented.
Okay, Mayor, second. I've got a motion that Councilman Chitt, seconded by Councilman Buras, to approve the consent agenda excluding item eight, which we will deal with separately. All in favor of that motion to approve all items four, five, six, seven, and nine, consent agenda, indicate by raising your hand. Pass it unanimously. Thank you. I'm going to save item eight for down in our action items. So we'll move on in down to a public hearing, item 10. So I intend to conduct a public hearing on request for zoning change from business to B2, the plant development PD for approximately 23.425 acres of land, described as A0029A, RBB tract 64B and 64B4 within the city of San Diego and generally located south of Hampton 455 and approximately 480 feet east of the Santa Fe railroad. I call the public hearing open at 7:28 and invite staff to introduce it, and then we can have anyone come forward that wants to speak.
Okay, this is the property that is right in front of Sable Creek. This property is currently zoned B2 and has been for quite some time, I think really since Sable Creek was started. So what they're, what the applicant is asking, they're not asking really for any use changes. They want to keep it the B2 uses, which is what it's already approved for, which would include B1 as well, B1 and B2. But the things that they're asking for is they would like these setbacks to be from the exterior rather than interior lot-to-lot setbacks. They want to just acknowledge the exterior and then be able to organize the businesses how they would choose inside. They did increase that exterior setback by five feet. B2 truly calls for a 20-foot, their PD calls for 25. The other thing that they want to do is allow the parking to be for the overall development so long as it still meets all of the requirements of the individual usage. And the same thing for the landscaping requirements. They would like that to be the same. The other thing that they've asked for is the buffer yard to have a straight and minimum three feet. Where currently our buffer yard is 10 feet with three feet in congested areas. So that's basically the changes that this PD would have over the straight zone. Those four changes are the basic changes. We did mail out 129 public hearing notices for people within 200 feet. We got six responses back. All were opposed. Most of the opposition, if you look through your packet, is because there's been a rumor that it was going to be houses or apartments. There are houses or apartments in this. They can't do any business within this PD that they could not do today without the PD. So that is, that is the item they're asking for.
Okay. Anything else from my way of introduction? Okay, I would invite anyone who'd like to speak on this item to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Laura Hornberg. I live at 94 North Highland Drive in Sandberg, just behind this area that's supposed to be built. I moved to this area several years ago, probably now about 13 actually, because this was a small town, and I liked this area. I moved from the Corinth area because it had started to be too metropolitan for my lives. I'm a multi-generational family. My parents moved in with me, and they have declining health. My father passed away in 2020. I now still have three generations living in my home, my daughter, my mother and I. So we're three women that live in this house. I work from home and have for the last seven years. I like nothing better than to see a hawk land on my fence. I had one just yesterday land on my fence. I have a 10-foot fence at the back of my property, the largest fence in the area. Because of all the development in this area, that hawk is no longer going to be here. I have a rabbit that comes under my fence, and I have a yorkie that loves to chase that rabbit and a squirrel across the back of my fence that terrorizes him on a daily basis. Now, that hawk is looking for my dog, I know, because she'll weigh's about five pounds. That hawk is looking for that rabbit coming across my yard, and that squirrel that goes across that fence. Because of all the development in this area, we are deteriorating the habitat of this wildlife. To put a three-foot buffer between this development and these homes is insane. I want to see that hawk be able to come out there and get mice, rabbits, and God forbid my dog, but if that's what happens, that's what happens. I'm going to be out there watching for my dog, but I want it to get a rabbit. I want a minimum of a 30-foot buffer between that building of property up there with these... Do we need another vape shop? God, I hope not. But if it's a restaurant, okay, I'll support it. But I would like a 30-foot buffer. I would like a masonry wall put up, stone, brick, whatever, okay? Because I work from my home and I sit at my table in the kitchen looking out that back fence. But I would like a masonry wall. I would like some trees. I like some native plants, lantana, whatever's natural out there so that we can maybe still have some rabbits or some little predators out there, snakes, I don't care, but just something to make it more natural. Kids are in school. They're right there. They're going to be coming over there. I mean, I don't want the congestion any more than anybody else does, but it's going to happen. Okay, I just ask that you give us something to look at besides more buildings and more construction, which is coming on both sides of us everywhere we work. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dana Chandler, and I live at 1 Fortune Creekside Drive. And she pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. Our back fence is going to face that development. And on August the 4th, when we came to a meeting here, we were told by the developer that there'd be a 20-foot buffer between our back fence and the new building or parking lot or whatever it is. And now we're seeing three foot, three-foot fence. That's quite a difference. So I'm here to vote for more than three feet and get the 20 feet that they quoted at the August 4th meeting.
My name is Sharon Ruiz. I live in Sable Creek subdivision. I've lived there since 2007. I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to the residents. As many of my neighbors, I support growth in San Diego and recognize the importance of this plant development. But when commercial activity is placed directly next to homes, we have to make sure the transition is handled responsibly. Right now, the proposed PD allows for a buffer as small as three feet in some areas. That is not enough to protect families from noise, lighting, and traffic impacts. Other Texas cities, including Denton and Corinth, which is what I sent to you all, require stronger buffers and solid masonry walls when commercial properties or single-family homes. So tonight, I'm respectfully asking council to amend the PD in three simple ways. Require a minimum 15-foot buffer yard along all residential edges with no reductions. Add an eight-foot masonry wall to provide real screening and noise protection. Strengthen the landscape buffer with trees and shrubs to soften the view and transition. These changes are modest, reasonable, and consistent with best practices across Texas. They don't stop development, they simply ensure that it moves forward in a way that respects the residents who already live here. On behalf of my family and my neighbors, I ask you to please adopt these amendments before final approval. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who should speak during the public hearing? Okay, say no one else approached the podium. We'll close the public hearing at 7:37. Since we're done with this, we'll go ahead and do item number 11 that relates to it before we go back and pick up eight. So we'll move on to action item 11, which is consideration of political action on ordinance number 092725, a request for a zoning change from B2, business to B2, to plant development PD for approximately 23.425 acres of land, described as A0029A, RBB tract 64B and 64B4 within the city of San Diego and generally located south of Hampton 455 and approximately 408 feet east of the Santa Fe railroad. Staff, any additional?
The only thing I would say is we do have the developer here, so if you have questions for him, I've outlined what the PD does include, but if you have questions for him, he is here.
I would think the developer would like to address some of the, some of the comments that have been laid out there. We would invite that.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kevin Ware. I've lived at 2104 23rd Circle Pilot Point. I'm actually the engineer, I'm not the developer. So in terms of dealing with the landscape buffer, we stuck to what the base zoning does allow. And part of the issue that we've had to deal with is to try to maximize the amount of available area for the development to make it concur across the board so that all the elements of landscape and everything else meet the code. The PD does allow us the flexibility to move things around so that we can give a little bit more, I guess, creativity in how the design is going to lay out. In terms of providing additional residential buffer, I can't commit to that because I'm not the developer. But I can tell you that I think the developer would be willing to work with anybody on any concerns related to fence issue or noise mitigation, all of them within the confines of the people.
I have a question. In exhibit A on page five, that was provided, it does have some details regarding the perimeter setbacks and what's proposed that are aligned with, I believe, what some of the citizens go to. So it shows that the front building setback, which is the boundary of the overall track, that would be 25 feet. And then it has rear building setbacks, which would be adjacent to that single-family resident zone of 20 feet still.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so we're not making any changes to that, right? This would just be internal to what's, what's within the perimeter border of the tracks, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's not going to be three feet between the seven of these fences and the back, building or dumpsters or?
No, there has to be a screening wall and there has to be a landscape provided by primarily because a lot of the predicted uses want that landscape and they want that buffer. Because the last thing that they want to do is to try to, think about it this way, a lot of the proposed use of this doesn't involve retail. And so the last thing that I would think that they would want to use to promote use of this that would antagonize the situation by making it worse to a nearby residential, especially one that's in chase.
And it also, just page six, it talks about the screening, six day, we normally, I know we've had developers in here and it was that close to, we try to buffer it with different types of zoning to gradually get there, and this is pushing right up against it. And in that situation, in the past, we've always required a taller fence, and that was never a problem, it's just when you would talk about materials, you know, an eight-foot, it's not going to fence, or 10-foot or 20-foot, that's nothing, but is it going to be wood? Is it going to be masonry? It just says framing in here, six day, a screening wall of fence shall be between six and eight feet tall. Only we get a little more specific in that and require some details of what type of material and exactly how tall. And I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable request if it's going to push up. I've missed the actual buffer, and it's going to be one of my questions, so I appreciate you pointing that out. So there is a 20 feet from the rear of the building to that fence line. And typically, I don't see much vegetation or landscaping behind it. Is that part of it? Is there some?
Typically, well, they have to have three foot of buffer, and the buffer, part of the buffer requirements is landscaping, so.
Yeah, but landscaping, it's a completely broad area.
It is laying out in our moments.
Yeah, but sometimes we get into detail what they're going to do. Is it going to be high shrubs? Is it going to be jennifers on the ground? I mean, landscaping.
They, they agreed in this PD to meet the city of San Diego's requirements for buffering.
Can you explain how the three-foot versus the 20-foot interact here? Because it says there's a minimum.
So.
I don't think that means like you go three foot all the way around, but there's, there is some on the flat, I mean, that's what I'm asking.
In this particular case, if they wanted to go three foot all the way around, they could with that buffering. So that means their landscape buffer would be three feet, their wall and landscape buffer would be three feet wide, is what that means. Now, they would still have that other 17 feet between that buffering and the back of the building.
That would not prevent them putting parking in those locations, as it shows on our design.
Correct or a fire.
Correctance.
Yes.
But it doesn't, it doesn't mean parking is allowed onto that three-foot buffer.
Because I can imagine a commercial building having that, they can't park behind there and get to it for utility reasons or anything like that.
It actually appears, I mean, it's, it's a difficult lot, and it actually appears like they're trying to put a majority of their parking towards the back of the fence to give it a nice facade across 455 as opposed to parking, all their parking out front, which you see with a lot of the building. So it looks like they're typically, a design like this, not always, but typically if they're, if they're focusing on the facades that carry, carries over or should carry over into the remainder of that lot, as the engineer stated, the aesthetics are pretty for retail businesses. And as he stated, upsetting the neighbors is not always good. There's probably a question about that, too. You know, the fences along the backside there, if those are primarily six-foot fences, do you want an eight-foot masonry fence there? It's two foot over a back fence. I mean, those are questions I can't answer because I haven't, haven't been out to the site. But there are some things that, that you could require that may be a little more detrimental to the aesthetics of, if I'm in my backyard, it's easy for me to say because this is not my backyard. But if I'm in my backyard looking out, I may not necessarily want to see, you know, another two-foot masonry over my back fence, either, you know.
What's the buffer between back fences in that area of your residential to the?
Lot lines.
Fences and lot lines. Right on the lot line?
Yes.
So that would be like adjacent to it, like next to it, so inches?
Because it's, depending upon where residents, how your fences are located, including if they're on the boundary line. So whatever screen fence is put on for this property could be directly adjacent to.
And there's a question made, which one of the fences?
Yeah. So we're getting, we're getting, as a pass by there, right now, are those fences that are all wood privacy fences? Terminal? Because on the other side, facing Indian Lane, that is a, that should be.
Yes, I'd like to see, you know, a little bit, a little bit of spacing in between residential's back wall and wall, the screening wall. There'd be a little bit of space in between there instead of just six inches.
If I might, the only challenge that comes from that is the maintenance component because generally it's weeds and everything else, and someone trying to weed dance it in the normal path gets a little challenge.
The other thing that I would say to that, sometimes that becomes a trash area where people dump trash over in between the two fences, and then that's another maintenance issue as well.
Bring me up a question.
Certainly.
It's on page 97 here, it's probably just being my quick head. It's letter of intent. Dear city of San Diego, in intention to give plant development to allow for development of non-residential uses, neighborhood commercial district, regional commercial district, and industrial district.
Industrial districts has been removed from that. We just did not get that taken out as a part. Thank you for pointing that out. That has been removed.
It's not been added to the paper.
No, it's not. It just was probably the original, their original letter of intent, and that was one of our comments that went back to them in the first round, was that this was not an area that was good for industrial, and so they removed that part from it. So the ordinance doesn't have that in there, just that letter of intent did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This doesn't include your home, does it?
No, it does not. It's, that one is little L down there at the bottom, which you see, right?
And it ties back in, in front of, yeah, in front of the road right there, right into that driveway.
Yeah, the driveway is probably, we'll see the book here, and probably, what is the distance? Right about here. Right about here.
It's right when you cross the runway separate.
Yeah. Right past the boat. Right past that little creek area.
So I'm still unclear what type of screening wall is going to be.
I don't think it was determined this time because if they have a plot for zoning, actual design of the wall will be established during landscape plans, and that will be the civil engineering.
And one of the ladies, and I forget which one, you said it's going to back up to your backyard, didn't you?
That would be Dana.
So it doesn't back up to my, and you're going to, there, fences at the same level as your fence or high?
What I would prefer?
Yes.
Well, if we get, if we get the 20 feet from the fence, then I would pay with eight.
So, I guess back to the senior manager's point, if it's level with your fence, I just believe it needs to be masonry or some type of status.
I agree, yes, yes. I would rather look at the fence in, in the back of the screen.
Well, I think a ratio of the time there, like I said, the ratio of walls on Indian Lane, you have to come over there. It's got to look.
And when you say 20 feet, you know, you're going to have your back to the fence, and then that part away from it's going to be the brick wall that's going to be the buffer in between, and then 20 feet on the other side of that to the building.
So from my back fence to the back of the?
It's going to be this, this much.
Just like we live at home right next to each other, right? Your neighbor's fence is not like 15 feet away from your fence, their house is 15 feet away, but that fence can be right next to each other.
And it, I mean, please, I mean, it's the gist of the point, I think. If we were to find a masonry type deal that matched the height of adjacent properties, the need for as large of a spatial properties would be reduced because we couldn't see through the masonry or the more improved fence structure than otherwise. It looks like they're backing up some of it. Some of it's broader, deeper, looks like it would add more landscape area. Some of it has, you know, parking, but not buildings around there. You wouldn't be looking at the back of the building.
Yes. And respectfully, when you have a certain amount of space between existing, say fence, wooden fence, retail, or residential, and even if you put in a ten foot or fifteen foot masonry wall, the wider you go, it becomes an issue of maintenance, not just for weeds, but for drainage. And drainage becomes skeetical. And it becomes difficult because unless someone's watching in on daily, we can notice we've always told people to try to keep it as close to each other. That way we don't have those issues of looking. As far as the type of material or whatever, clearly, you know, I can't fit it into the package right now, but that's a requirement.
That's fine. My point was the spacing. My point was that the spacing with the tire.
Yes.
Once you get a solid screening wall there, basically or otherwise, that pass that is less impactful to the resident because you've got a solid wall.
Do you know, do you know if your plot would be possibly approaching any of these homeowners to replace those back fences? If they're on the lot lots, they move to a masonry fence along the back, it'd be a question for the residents, more so the developer. But when you notice that these are six foot fences, if you're putting fence in down the entirety of that.
Yeah.
The replacing, that becomes, that becomes a screening wall. And these all move from wood fences to masonry at the same uniform height. And some of these fences could probably possibly use replacement by the looks of them.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know, that would totally depend on the developer, the placement of the fence, and the residents impacted.
Well, that's probably going to happen anyway because I've seen that where you have wooden fence on three sides, a buffer fence comes up, as that material is, they just pull it in and that becomes, that, that masonry wall becomes their back fence.
Right. And to the extent that that becomes more than a tiering, I don't know. Zoning, to my understanding, is basically stipulation of the type of material, of the exact placements of on the property line. I don't, we don't have enough information. We haven't done a boundary survey to be able to tell you if hard fences are there or not.
But do you think if that, if that, if you show to be with, with, on the property line here, as this development may have been cut out, do you think the developer might be interested in making that approach to those residents?
As part of the engineering signal, landscaping plan, I think that would be a problem. But again, the mechanics of how that is, because.
Understood.
Without having an actual say, because I have no idea, part of the residential fences might be three foot already over on the buffer.
Correct.
We don't really know. So as far as commitment of the total replacements of every residential fence along the back, we can't make that representation.
Yeah, and again, understanding you can't make the representation on behalf of the developer anyways. Just do you, is, do you think that if the mechanics were there, do you think that there would be an issue with that possible approach?
No problem. I don't think that's the issue.
The.
Their way.
I guess it is. That's how they feel about that.
Yeah. What, you hear that proposition that we're basically trying to replace any, and reduce maintenance if it was masonry wall along your back inconsistent throughout the subdivision. So it had consistent appearance and, and upkeep. Is that something that helps with a more structural sound wall if the developer came to replace that?
I think part of the problem with Sable Creek is, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the side where the high school is, that's something that's basically mostly rentals, isn't it? Or is it on the other side?
It's only, when you come to the stop sign and you take a ride, the first six houses are rentals.
Right.
And then the rest aren't.
And then you have the HOA to contend with. And I'm on the HOA. I've been waiting four months for slower approval. So. The, I guess the part I have the question is, I know I have this on the P D. It shows a three feet upper and I hear you discussing twenty. Show me where there's twenty and show me where there's three, if you don't mind.
I don't understand. Um, there would be twenty feet between this property line and the back of the building.
The back of the building? Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, there would be twenty feet between this property line, which runs along Sable Creek, and the back of any of these buildings.
If it's a masonry wall, I would assume the residents, but then who absorbs the cost?
Well, the developer would be building the fence anyway.
Again, all hypothetical.
All hypothetical.
Everything would have to fall into place and everyone would have to agree.
And when those details be put into the P D or would it be left not specific like it is now?
It would, it would, it could be added to the P D because the boundary surveys have not, not been done. Again, the boundary surveys, as the engineers indicated, if they don't line up, they may not have light to, to, to do that. Because they, it, it could be over, the existing property could be technically are really on their side of that property line. Although fences could, it could be part of the developer's property where they would kind of tighten a little bit. So you really wouldn't have, the, the conversation really, if the mechanics worked out, is that something that everybody might be interested in discussing? Because the, the, the wall itself, because it's not a, it is a structure, but it is not a building, does it, the twenty foot setback doesn't apply. And so it sounded like there may be some clarity that we just cleared up as to where that masonry wall sat. That, that wall by law, just like the fence, can be on the property line if it's approved.
Respectfully from, again, like, I'm sorry, the engineer.
No, absolutely.
When you start taking wooden fences and how do you connect to a masonry wall that wooden fences are in the lot? And so it becomes a little bit more of a challenge of understanding where the boundary is and how it comes. Because at that point, is the developer going to place it for the lot of the fence? That's not a property. That's, that's where I'm a little, I guess, confused.
I'd absolutely understand that, Mr. Mayor, just to be totally, yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent.
And right now, like you said, we're just sort of, I mean, things and saying what we want. So those are all great questions. And I guess those can be ironed out realistically whenever everyone has all the information that they need. I think generally speaking, at the high levels of the part, right? I think on, on whole, if it's doable, we would like to continue what's already kind of established in the neighborhood with the masonry fence as a buffer, just maybe this is residential all combined. And we, and actually, that was already kind of addressed in the document that there's a screening wall. So the only thing, we're really specifying here that we want it to be masonry. That's really the only big, big change.
And, and I'm comfortable representing that that will be the case.
I mean, great.
I might get a dirty phone call from the developer tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Well, tell them you said.
I, I stay here tonight. I'm the representative, so I'm going to make that representation. And if that's what the council votes on, it's what gets put in.
Did you have to decide if this pick up, right? Bouncing between, we don't pay, by the way, that was a gamble.
I'm not used to saying.
Bouncing what their residential needs are with areas that are already, you know, by the pass, the worst, we can't go back in time and change that. But I think everybody seems to be on board with doing the best with the situation that we're in and allowing that space to exist on the other side of the very solid fence.
Understood.
And that's where I was going with this. What happens, buffers past that type of fence are less imperative if we get it in solid separation.
So what does staff need from us to make sure that our job being to provide these are all perpetuity? Do you?
Lady, you motioned, you motioned the, the P D and then, then you establish what that material would be required on that fence.
I think vote to approve the P D as presented with, with the amendment that the, any wall adjacent to residential property be masonry construction.
And I would, I, I would caution against establishing a set height. Because again, I'm not sure.
The language that exists currently says between six and eight feet. I'm not, I want to change that.
And again, the conversation is certainly not to bind the developer to anything. It was just to make sure that there's open dialogue there.
Totally understand. I just, again, the mechanics of how we implement that, I understand to be very careful.
I understand.
Okay. Council, do you have other questions of the developer or the staff? Go through this. Kind of heard some examples of how we might approach it. I'm just entertaining motion from how you'd like to proceed.
Um, so we're going to add a, to make a motion that we approve agenda item number eleven as per state's statement. That would be order number oh nine two seven two five to request some change for business two, two plans development for approximately twenty-three point forty-five acres of land. Dinner located separate up in four fifty-five and approximately four hundred and eighty east of Zentia Road. With the amendments that the screening wall material be specified as a masonry. Done?
One second. All right, so I've got a motion by Councilwoman Barrett, seconded by Councilwoman Bill U, to approve agenda item eleven, which is order number oh nine forty-seven twenty-five, with a request for zoning change from business two to V two for planned development to be for approximately twenty-three point forty-five acres of land. As further described there, item eleven, with the amendment that the screening wall material be masonry. Get that correct?
Just a second.
Any other discussion or questions, the council? All in favor of the motion, we'd be catching a raise of hands. Passing it, man. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ladies, thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, let's, um, let's go back up and deal with item eight now. That's consideration possible action on the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven and also cooperation agreement, five protection services between Deacon County and the City of Sanger. Got to hear a presentation from the chief and staff during a work session on this item. So we discussed it quite a bit. It's a challenging position that was placed in by the county for years, really out of moral obligation, going all the way back to our volunteer fire department, which did discover this without any subsidy whatsoever. To more recent years where we've gotten only part of subsidy. And with that, for that subsidy on, really part of contract declining because our head count is going, our column is going up and our total, total debt has been divided by the state of Sanger. So it puts council in a precarious position. We always want to do what's right by the residents of Sanger. And I'm using residents kind of on purpose as opposed to citizens. We have always taken care of our citizens in town. And fire and EMS have also always taken care of residents of Sanger out of town. It's unfortunate that the county, at least at this time, you know, even in the past, does not want to fully fund our costs per run and would like a two-year contract. I think we maybe, I guess I'll entertain the council's direction as opposed to the contract. And maybe before we go there, I don't want to miss staff coming in earlier on if you'd like to make some further discussion on it. But I wanted to make that introductory remarks so, so everybody that's here understands the challenges.
Yeah, I definitely want to come back in, be able to answer any questions. And you had a lot of information thrown at you earlier that you may not have had opportunity to see before. So if there was anything in there that you can be clarified, we can do that now.
Well, I appreciate the detail, Pat, that the chief, manager, and staff put together for council and city manager working together to give us good information and actually seeing the numbers, conceiving the disparity. I'm not sure that I, I would think where, I mean, it was always disparity, but to the extent. Any questions or comments the council has for staff and all? I do, I do know that we contemplated, I mean, I think there's several options, you know, not signed. There's an option of voting to approve it as presented because it has contractual act clauses in it. And requesting that staff proceed with pretty direct negotiations with the county further to try to get a better agreement and report back to us within the seven to nine range, sixty, ninety days. That would be an option. Or third is to vote it up, be done with it. So I, I just entertain the council's wishes on how you'd like to proceed.
Can I ask just?
Yep.
Questions? So, you know, it's coming in a lot, so, and that's based on last year's number. Is, is there anybody we can get an update and see where we are periodically? I forget the number of calls. You brought it up, you said, we have, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight fire calls being reimbursed at, you know, seven hundred dollars. That's what we're getting paid for going forward.
Four to two.
We're, we hit that two seventy-eight. I'm very curious, that was in a full year. I think we're going to hit that, hopefully, which was in a year. But our amount, and this is what I, I, I'm struggling with is how do we budget? We, we know we're going to take a certain amount, we're subsidizing a certain amount. But if those calls, say they grow like ten percent, twenty percent, we're not getting any additional funds. The funds are fine. And, and so the more calls we make, that seven hundred is just going to be chopped down. The two fifty-four is going to be chopped down. So we're subsidizing more and more after every single one of those calls from last year. It was two seventy-eight on fire or three fifty-two on ambulance. I, I would think that that would be tough to manage or we'd want to keep an eye on that. Personally, I think it's our role is to meet with political leaders and, and to be armed with that information because this, this could put us in a bind.
Councilman, you, because, because the contract is clear that we paid in over years to handle it. When we budget, we do have those numbers. We do know when those longs comes in. We do, do report call counts and we can clearly do that. Next year on a two-year agreement, next year the, the three, three percent CPI, you know, next year, that's how we'll budget. We'll budget the, the number you have and as low as three percent.
But this, this is the first year it's locked in and we're not getting.
You're not going to pay gears. You're going to get a three percent increase against that dollar amount of calls yearly to.
Don't matter.
Other than what, what I believe you're saying, which is accurate, that the more calls you make, the lower that dollar amount actually gets.
And, and it's being more and more than we supplement, everything we talk about. And so just understanding when we hit those, those metrics and if we hit them, you know, in six months, okay? But then year two is going to be even worse. I mean, calls aren't going to be good. They're not going to go down five or eight and it's, and we're growing. I just don't know how much the calls are going to grow. But we're locked in for two years. So with that is, I mean, I would encourage the staff to, uh... So with that is, I mean, I would encourage staff to, uh, the, my people at the county of that and stay on that and, but if, if I don't know, there's nothing I can do about it either. I would like to be in for one, I think the council would like to be in for one. Just doing the measurements along, metrics along the way of where we are.
We can definitely provide the numbers and when we hit the marker of the two seventy-eight or three fifty-two, we can provide that. Uh, we can do a physical accounting here, whichever way you can see. This one's physical.
Just be aware so that can, can, can prompt us to get involved as well.
And that goes down to what we were talking about, take that termination agreement. We hit that early, then we have a hundred and eighty days to say we're.
Right.
Counsel, we can add, we can add a, a clarifier to the monthly reports on that so that you can see what your chief.
Perfect numbers against.
We're happy to do that.
In my view, just by direct reporting, you know, numbers against the total. You know, we're a hundred out two seventy-eight, we're one oh two out three fifty-two, whatever. So we keep that two seventy-eight, three fifty-two in the numbers. And we're very happy to do that.
No, that would be very difficult, not too.
Currently, we provide the numbers. The only thing we're not doing for you is we're not writing in city versus county.
Right, right.
I mean, that is a third. We're not looking to add extra. It sounds like we've got to keep it anyway.
We do, so we just try to simplify it by getting total numbers for the month. And then we can do it the other way.
It sure does sound like you know, there's no. Yeah, as much as I don't like the financial aspect, I do think that, uh, I think the moral obligation does outweigh that. If nobody else has any questions or, uh, or any other comments, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, that we approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection services between Deacon County and the city of San Diego.
Awesome.
Okay. Just as a point of further discussion, I do have a motion by Councilwoman Billu and seconded by Councilwoman Barrett to approve, uh, the interlocal for twenty-five to twenty-seven with, uh, for fire services between county and city. For clarification, if we want to add language to that motion to staff or to give further, uh, further, further meet to there when they go back to that, so here's, here's what council said. Do, we're just doing what council said to do because they had real concerns about this issue. I, I'm just, I'm just asking for.
Yeah, and I kind of said with that, that if you need it in the motion, I'd like to do that, but I am can ask you for the, for me to ask. What, what, uh, what would you like to?
Chief, you can correct me, but I think, uh, if, if you're wanting us to continue discussions with the, the county. If you're approving this so that there's no service lapse, and you want us to continue discussions with the county, um, perhaps a ninety-day review of where we're at ninety days on that would allow the county and the city have the time to have more back and forth and still keep you within the windows of the agreement if you determine that a future day we should make a change. You want to ask, is there a trigger point with the call volume that you want this?
Uh, I think it's like anything else, you know, probably seventy-five, eighty percent. I mean, if I'm tracking the numbers, you know, what they were, if you do it monthly and then in total, what I don't want to wait is in six months, you go and say, we're already at three hundred calls on fire. How late? You know, just some prep, just some prep that if we need to get involved, we can.
Okay, we'll set it seventy-five percent of the call volume that's agreed to on the contract. We'll count that as a trigger point. But we will still. Yes, we're still going to provide the monthly runs, but when we are at seventy-five percent, we're going to really amp up and say, we're there, we're five months in, six months in, eight months in, whatever it is. Because that will lead us back to that hundred day date.
This is, I think this is a philosophical discussion.
I think it's not hard, of course.
So there's, so I think what we're trying to do, framing my misunderstanding on, could be, I think we're looking for an amended motion that would say we're going to approve the agreement as presented under Act nine nine with the county. Uh, because we don't want any, so there's ensure no service lapse, but would like a ninety-day review period where staff approaches and continues to approach the county with regard to this issue and the provisions therein that, that city can come back to us. They're not here. That would be most important, great. And then I think if we felt like there was consensus, which I think there is, that says, hey, even no matter what outcome of that is, if we're getting seventy-five, eighty percent into those numbers, we'd like to see you back so that we can have a conversation without pushing a second time, even after the ninety day, after the ninety days.
So our rule conviction loses that some dollar amount eventually, or what? When you're going to make a moral stand now, how are you going to later say, well, no, I'm changing mine. It's got too expensive now. Now my morals are out the window.
Okay, I'm going to amend the motion and don't be alarmed. It could be that one. So I'll make a motion to approve of consent agenda, item number eight as presented, uh, to ensure no service lapse. And, uh, for a ninety day review, which staff continues to discuss and possibly negotiate with the county. Is that, is that your option? Okay.
All right. Are you okay with that? Okay, so I have, uh, amended motion by Councilwoman Billu and Councilwoman Barrett has agreed to such amendment to approve, uh, the twenty twenty-five to twenty-seven interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection service between Deacon County and the city of San Diego. We're approving that so as there will be no service lapse to our covered area, but we're instructing staff to, you know, to have a ninety day review, uh, period where they discuss and negotiate further with the county as, as enabled and report that to us. Okay. Any other discussion, no council meetings? Call me.
No, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion on table here, um, let me take my right hand. All opposed. Okay, it's four, four and one against. The record, uh, Councilwoman Chig is voting against the motion. It passes four to one. Okay. That brings us down here. Brings us down to well, which is consideration possible action on order number two nine twenty-three twenty-five, approving the property tax roll. Pass it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So these next few items that we've got are going to enact the proposed budget for tax rate that we've been discussing for the last few months and they go in the same order every year. So this first item is approving the tax roll. And Texas Property Code requires that city council approve the tax roll that's been submitted by the tax collector. And the city received those on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, there is a copy of those certified totals that were received on that date here in the packet. And staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Okay, council, I would entertain the motion to approve of the property tax roll, which is ordered on twenty-three twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion to approve ordinance zero nine dash twenty-three dash twenty-five, approving the property tax roll.
Drive a second. So I've got a motion by Councilwoman Billu, seconded by Councilwoman Burris to approve order number two nine twenty-three twenty-five, approving the property tax roll as presented. Any other discussion?
On the roll, it's got a total for tax, whether nine day and eight, seven, four, eight, or seven, eight, six, and six. And then your budget, you've, you've got that ten million, twenty-eight, sixty, six hundred sixty-one. Does, does that?
It, this is, so, so the tax, just the, the tax roll changes from day to day. This was as of July. And if you notice, there's three columns in these pages. The first is ones that are not under review. Second is those that are under review in total.
Right.
Um, and then when we budget for general fund, we typically do not collect a hundred percent of the taxes. So we do a calculation and run about ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent there. Um, but they, based on, that's, that's based on the most recent numbers that we've got.
Right.
But what you have to do tonight is approve the tax roll that was submitted to us in July.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's, that's kind of.
It's like that.
Well, it's always a limit where if we can budget as presented, then we can get to that point.
Right.
Uh, and if we have to amend the budget for, we check and we have to do periodically throughout the year.
But it won't, it won't reflect that.
Won't reflect. So I, any, any additional questions, Councilman Chig?
No.
So I have a motion as second to approve the property tax roll for ordinance there. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve more than the total nine twenty-three twenty-five, approving the property tax roll for the county or municipal. Passage your hand. Thank you. That brings us to item fourteen, which is adopting budget. Consider, which is consideration possible action on order number two nine twenty-four twenty-five, adopting budget, providing for the appropriation of funds for operating capital expenditures for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, providing for the intra and interdepartmental fund transfers, providing for unexpected revenues such as grants, donations, insurance proceeds, providing for an effective pay, and providing for approval of the investment policy.
So, Mayor and Council, this ordinance will adopt the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget as the official budget for the year beginning October first. And budget workshops open to the public were held, city council meetings on July seventh, twenty twenty-five, and on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget was filed at the city secretary's office and has been available on the city's website for public inspection. In accordance with the city charter and local government code, city published the required notices in the newspaper and posted the notice also on the city's website. And a public hearing on the proposed budget was held August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And there had been no changes to the proposed budget, to the budget you're adopting tonight, other than, you know, what, what's been presented to you already. Um, the last part of that, of that briefing there, the ordinance also approves the city's investment policy. Per the Public Funds Investment Act, it has to be approved every twelve months. And there have been no changes to the investment policy since last year. And staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Counsel, what's your pleasure, item thirteen?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, this. Action number number thirteen as presented.
That's second.
I'm sorry, can I?
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Billu, seconded by Councilwoman Dan, approving that side of thirteen as presented, which is ordered on twenty-nine twenty-four twenty-five, detailed out by item thirteen. Any other discussion on item on the motion? All in favor of the motion, you can raise your hand. Passage your hands. That brings us to item fourteen, which is the consideration of possible action on order number two nine twenty-five twenty-five, setting the city's adult lord on tax rate at zero point six eight nine seven four seven per one hundred dollars for taxable assessment valuation for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I will draw staff's attention that there is specific language on the packet page three fifty-six that staff should consider as they make that motion. Uh, council, as you make that motion, staff has provided that language there to help advise us.
Mayor and Council, now that the adopted budget has been set for October first, this ordinance sets the tax rate that will support that budget. And again, as the mayor just said, the ordinance sets the tax rate for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year of zero point six eight nine seven four seven for one hundred dollars valuation, which is unchanged from the last two years' tax rate. Um, the tax rate is divided into two parts, a maintenance and operations part and a general obligation debt. The M and O portion is zero point five seven three four eight five. And the general obligation debt portion is zero point one one two, I'm sorry, zero point one one six two six two. And in compliance with the property, with the Texas Property Tax Code, city published the required notices on the tax rate. Notice that tax rate has been available on the city's website. And a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate was held August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance and following up with the mayor said, the second item there, which that recommendation, uh, recommended motion, there is very specific language per the property tax code that's required to adopt this ordinance. And the vote on this must be a roll call vote of city council.
So it's, it's one motion to approve the ordinance and make that particularly moot language.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, what's your, this is just for the regular, to make it real clear, because you're real quiet. The tax rate is staying the same as it has been for the last two years. So there's not been an increase in the tax rate. Some of the growth in property value will cause some additional proceeds to come to the city, but we're not raising the tax rate.
Thank you for that. I think that's pretty important.
Yes, everything about it, that's what.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I believe I heard you say that we need to, uh, approve Agenda item fourteen. And I move that the property tax rate be increased, not the adoption of a tax rate of zero dot six eight nine seven four seven for one hundred dollars, which is effectively a three point two seven percent increase in the tax rate.
Yeah, I've got a motion by Councilwoman Billu. Drive a second.
Sorry.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilwoman Billu, seconded by Councilwoman Burris to approve, uh, on the fourteen, ordinance oh nine twenty-five twenty-five, uh, moving that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six eight nine seven four seven per one hundred dollars, which is effectively a three point two seven percent increase in the tax rate. Any other discussion on this item? So you know the discussion, I ask the city secretary to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Barrett, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Burris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan?
Yes.
Councilmember Billie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chig?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Passage your hand, please. That brings us to item fifteen, which is consideration of possible action on order number two nine twenty-six twenty-five, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Mayor and Council, I hate to sound like a record, but I'm going to say it again, the approved tax rate that you just voted on is unchanged from the current year.
We could say that as much as Dan.
The increase in the tax roll since last year, which is two items, that is new properties, new buildings on a tax roll, plus increased valuation of properties, means that the city will receive more revenue on property tax, in property taxes from this year, and the local government code requires that a government body that adopts a budget that raises more revenue from property taxes than the previous year, ratified by a separate vote, the property tax increase reflected in the budget. That's what this ordinance does, and staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
And just so we're clear, that could be one penny, and we could still go through the same drill.
Yes, one penny, one penny more revenue would require this. I don't know of any city in the state of Texas that doesn't have to do this.
Right. Council, what's your pleasure, item 15?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 09-26-25, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it again.
I've got a motion by Council Bill U, seconded by Council Dan, approving ordinance 092625, ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by raise your hand. Passes you, yes. Item 16 is consideration of possible action of resolution 2025-14, made the fee schedule.
Mayor and Council, last year, city moved to update the master fee schedule for the city once a year to align with the fiscal year October 1st through September 30th. The budget that you've just approved includes new fees on a few things that are included in this updated fee schedule, and those changes are the adoption of new water and wastewater service rates as recommended by Luchia and Strategies and Solutions on August 4th in council meeting, the introduction of a notary fee for public notary services provided by city staff to the public, the elimination of some parks fees regarding moving the pitcher's mound, pitching rubber, and bases because they're no longer providing those services, and finally, an adjustment of the practice field lighting fee from $20 per 60 minutes of time to $25 per 90 minutes of time to better reflect what actual practice times are for the teams. And there is included in your packet a schedule showing all of those changes, they're highlighted in color there for you, and the ordinance that's attached does include the final copy of the fee schedule that would go into effect on October 1st. And again, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Okay, per staff's discussion, Council, what's your pleasure, on the resolution on item 16?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-14 on the fee schedule.
Do I have a second? Second. I've got a motion by Council Bill U, seconded by Council Barrett, approving resolution 2025-14 and ending the fee schedule on August 26. Any other discussion? All in favor, indicate by raise your hand. Passes you, yes. Item 17, consideration of possible action on authorizing the city manager to execute a services agreement with Core Construction for the Design OPCC, the construction documents for the renovation of the Sanger Community Center.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a service agreement with Core Construction to, for the renovations of the community center. Core Construction is a turnkey construction company. What that means is they provide all aspects of the construction process, they go from design, engineering, architectural, to construction documents, estimating, construction management, all the way up to construction. They are a buyboard company and a member of co-op purchasing agreement, which also saves us some money when it comes to our bidding processes and procurement process that the city requires. They are, once, they are, like I said, they are a turnkey company. Once the design OPCs and estimates are in, we will enter, if council and everybody's happy with the decision to move forward with Core, we will enter into a next agreement that consists of the construction management, bidding assistance, and overall construction. This does, is the same process that we do for a lot of our design projects we've done in the past, they will come back with a, instead of doing a 30, 60, 90, they will do a 40 and a 70% documents. This is a smaller project, but it is very important with a smaller scale, so coming back and doing the big process during the design process can all be taken care of in the 40% documents that will be coming to council for your approval. Core Construction is here, Dave Wilson is a member of Core Construction, he is here to answer any questions about the overall company, but this is a project to renovate the community center. And I will be reminding you of this, most of this updates are ADA required updates.
So that amount, the 80,000, is that, it's late, I have some questions. It just shows a line that says under general bills. That is just for the engineering?
Engineering, construction documents, and design. Normally, it comes back with design and the construction costs are part of a different contract, the design is part of this.
No, I was just trying to clarify exactly what we were giving for that.
Council, the core construction, because this project is estimated to be over the threshold requiring an architect, Core Construction is one of the only groups, turnkey groups that the state has on buyboard that's authorized to provide those services as turnkey, so they're able to do the architectural as well as any engineering related to systems, mechanical, electrical, and those things, all as a single package, that they'll do the complete design. The reason we did not put them both together is because we want you to be able to see the cost of construction, the SMA cost of construction. Makes more sense to us to bring those into packets rather than one chapter.
So what's the, this is approved, where can we begin, roughly, man?
As soon as the, in the contract, as soon as the contract is signed.
Yeah, as soon as we have a PO, we'll start having meetings with his team and whoever else is interested in developing the scope.
And so, I know y'all will stay on this, but I haven't seen these folks in a day. Timeline from start until you're ready to present something to us?
Six or seven rounds? Probably a month.
A month?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pretty fast process through cooperative purchasing.
Okay.
This is somebody I work with all the time, in fact, we've been talking to the chief about doing something, that's how we settle on the architect reviews.
Okay.
So we're excited to be a part of it, it's true.
So for this, are we going to expand it just for these renovations issued inside that?
For an ADA compliant, we have some issues there that have to be addressed. The Ron has identified some additional issues that since we're there, and we have a limited window, this is the thing with the community center, because issues for elections, we have limited windows when we can do things, staff have thought it made sense to address the majority, not all of the issues that we can at one time. So the scope is a little broader than it probably started out, which is why we're here to help get that designed, and so that we can hit the correct timeline.
This is a budgeted item that is in this fiscal year, and we'll move on to the, into the next fiscal year, once we have those construction documents and you guys are okay with the final cost of the overall construction, another contract will be brought in.
That contract, that's budgeted the next one?
That is correct.
Next this year?
Move it into two different projects, two different fiscal years.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure on the 17th?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17 for the authorize the city manager to execute a services agreement for core construction for the design, OPCC, and construction documents for the renovations of the Sanger Community Center.
Mayor, second?
I'll say it.
I've got a motion by Council Chick, seconded by Council Barrett, to authorize city manager to execute services agreement for core construction for the design, OPCC, and construction documents for renovations at the Sanger Community Center. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by raise your hand. Passes you, yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks for taking with us. Council, are there any future items you'd like to mention for staff here?
I've got, hold on, I've contacted Mr. Knobbl a couple times on this, I don't know if you guys have perceived anything, but we have several laws now coming into city limits. And, I'm trying to think of some ideas inside city, so they're trying to figure out some way to deal with this issue. I've obviously, quite a few, but.
Any other, any other future to that?
What's that? Is that done through here?
Yeah. Any other future to that?
No.
Okay. Council, you've got information on items there, public services wage report for July, the annual gas cost for facility 50, the rider GCR over $100 there for happens. Any comments or questions for staff on any information? So you know what items on our agenda, I'll probably be returning at 8:44.
And, Council?